City Council meeting for August twenty second, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, welcome all, roll call Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Rattels.
Present.
Councilmember Wiseman.
Here.
Councilmember Guard.
Present.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Posthuma.
Present.
Councilmember Overhauser is not present.
But I do have requests to excuse Councilmember Overhouse.
Second.
The motion is second to excuse Teresa, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to citizen comments. I did not get any written requests or emails for comments, but I do want to open it up to the audience here as well as those that are attending virtually. Does anybody wish to address our city council this evening? Anybody online? Once again, does anybody wish to address our council this evening? Um, Joe, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, thank you. Okay, let's move on to our minutes. You've had an opportunity to review our regular city council, uh, meeting minutes for August eighth. If there's no corrections to that, I accept the motion to approve those.
So move.
Second. Thank you, motion second to approve our minutes from August eighth, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Vouchers Cindy.
Total vouchers, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
The Honorable Councilman Hilton and I, as the Finance Committee, we reviewed all these expenditures and I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion a second to approve our vouchers as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Cindy, our vouchers are approved. We do not have any claims for damages and you can see on the agenda the small contracts that I signed. And now, I would like to introduce Representative Joe Schmick from the Legislative District Nine, which we are now a part of. Joe, thank you for being here. And just as a note, Joe was instrumental in us getting the funding for our brush truck, so thank you very much.
Hey.
You're very welcome. I'm Representative Joe Schmick, I live in Colfax, uh, welcome back to Cheney, back into the ninth district. Uh, ten thousand square miles I cover, and there are forty-four city councils and I have made it a goal to try to get around to all of them. And so, uh, tonight I was able to come here and thank you for allowing me to speak. There are two things that I'd like to remind you that you've probably already done. But I am telling all my city municipalities that I would suggest that you have a fee schedule in place for public records requests. And you've already got that, great. The other one has to do with the Blake decision, that is, uh, the possession of drugs. There's a provision in that bill that would allow the state to supersede and place drug treatment facilities in your community. Uh, and currently, there'd be no way that the public can even comment on that. Once a year, you're allowed to open your comp plan. And I would suggest that when you do open your comp plan, you put a provision in there that you're going to have a public hearing upon a drug treatment facility that would sit inside your city limits. And I'm telling all the municipalities, I think this is, I think the public needs to weigh in on the subject, and I would suggest that when you uh, open your comp plan, you should, uh, think about having a provision like that. And really, that's the only two things that I wanted to bring forth. I am happy to listen, hear what you got for me. Uh, and I brought my computer, so I'm taking notes, so. But whatever, uh, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for allowing me just a couple of minutes.
Sure.
To speak, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you Representatives, connect, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Richmond? Yes, go ahead.
Well, thank you for being here. I commend you for trying to, to get, what is it, forty-four cities? Your district?
Yeah, that's kind of was a mistake. Well, I was down at Clarkson, their city council, and I said, well, I want to get around to all of them. And the reporter from the Tribune was there and she passes me a note after I got done, she says, how many is that?
Oh.
And I started counting, that's when I learned I had forty-four. And close to fifty school districts.
Very good. And is it ten thousand square miles?
I have the southern half of Spokane, Whitman, Adams, Asilton, Garfield, Franklin, Columbia, and Lincoln. So I drive a lot.
Yeah, it's fast. Well, again, thank you for being here, just real quick, with regard to the public records fees, is there something coming our way with that? That regard, or is it the same old, we get to charge like a dime for four hours of work?
Former representative, uh, Neely, Terry Neely from Columbia County called me and asked me, he says, take another run at the public records. And so I'm going to, uh, try to have a bill this year in the legislature, I'm working with the Association of Washington Cities, try to put something forward that puts some, a few sideboards around there, especially for the people who have, could care less about the public records, but care more about your ability for fulfilling all the timelines. And we've got to, we've got to do something, it's not working.
Right, I commend you for that. I, I agree, we need to have records accessible. But it seems like it has swung so far that no one really has any regard to the, the economic impact to local government, the small local government where just a few can create a significant budget issue in our smaller cities, so whatever you could do on that end, that would be much appreciated.
I'm sure it's not going to be met with a lot of, uh, fanfare. Uh, but there's needs to be some parameters put around there. I agree. We need transparency and the people need access to those records. However, the fact to put that request forward and your whole intention is gotcha. I, I, I bristle at that. I don't believe that that was the intent of that law.
Just one more, if it could, it's more of a comment, and I'm not surprised where the state government is again intruding on local government. I guess sovereignty, I don't know if that's the right word, but we're seeing it more and more now. You know, where they're encroach on our, our land use capabilities, and I see this as another one, so whatever you could do to that end, it would be much appreciated. Watch out for Big Brother, I guess, is.
It's one of my, I don't want to say philosophy, I would say beliefs, that you need to let the cities do their, what they need within their city. They know best. And I have the same philosophy around school boards. They know best about those kids in their community and their school. And anytime we supersede that from Olympia, that, that's not right, and I think there's a better way.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joe?
Thanks for.
We appreciate your time.
Well, thanks for allowing me to chat.
Appreciate it, we'll stay in touch.
I have a card of that, I got everybody else, but I'll get you afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna have a presentation on the new behavioral health unit, and Mark, you're gonna kick this off, okay?
I would like to, first of all, introduce Chief Brad Brissman from the Airway Heights Police Department. Uh, he has a presentation, uh, that he is going to present to you about the behavioral health units and all the good that's gonna come out of that resource for both of our communities, so give me one second to share.
I know, welcome to Airway Heights City Manager. Also wanted to welcome, uh, Airway Heights City Manager Albert Tripp, thank you Albert for being here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor Council, for the opportunity to, uh, talk about this, uh, service that I think is vital to our communities, and as we evolve in our community, we have these people that, uh, are in crisis and substitutes disorder. Um, we want to provide this service to our community and, and had an opportunity with a, with the starter program and now uh, within, with the, uh, what we call the West Plains Crisis Response Team. Um, so today we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, um, what we have going on here. And we will, uh, let each of our people introduce themselves and talk about what kind of, how they can serve our communities.
Hi everyone, uh, my name's Jenny Mandon, and I am one of the correspondent clinicians with the West Plains Crisis Response Team. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. Um, a little bit about me, I've been with the program since it, uh, started back in April, and, uh, before that, I was working out at Eastern State Hospital for a little bit. And then before that, I was with the, uh, county and cities behavioral health unit, so for about four years. Good evening, I'm Noelle Kunsman, I'm also a licensed clinical social worker with the same crisis response team. I've been with the team since the beginning of the month. And my history a little bit is actually graduated from Eastern, from my bachelor's and my master's, so kind of fun to be coming back home. Um, and I have experienced prior to this, I was working at Spokane VA in our urgent care, working closely with our veterans, creating a program of how we can work with veterans in crisis and making sure they're plugged into the right resources, so I'm able to bring that on to the community, because I know we serve so many veterans in this area, and the VA is a difficult, uh, monster to approach sometimes, so, um, and prior to that, I was working in Yakima as a crisis responder there, working hand in hand with the police and did some of my own like crisis outreach with our community teams. So, thank you.
Welcome both of you, thank you.
Thank you, I, I was hoping that our grant writer, Elise Manotti, who was kind of the brainchild behind this, saw some things and, and then put some stuff together for Washington Association of Sheriff's Police Chiefs that have given us this opportunity and this grant. Um, I don't know if you knew about the first iteration, as it started, we got up, received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which, uh, which led us to Jenny. Um, and it gave us the opportunity to bring Jenny on board, and then we applied for a, another grant that gave us one point two three million um, for the next two years to serve our communities, uh, with the, with this, with these vital programs. Uh, kind of the goals of the program is to improve mental health response, uh, diversion from incarceration. And this embeds these mental health professionals within the Airway Heights and Cheney, uh, police departments to serve, uh, residents of the West Plains region, kind of facilitates that level of service, I think always in the evolution of service as we try to provide these, uh, these programs, we're trying to do it more on the West Plains centric, we're trying to, we're stronger together. Uh, we're so small individually, but together we're so much stronger, and I think that's what our thought process as we start to evolve these programs and these grant programs. I think a large part of our success is the collaboration between the two communities. That's why I think the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs gave us this major grant, uh, that gives us these opportunities as a result of our partnership. Kind of our service area, um, is the West Plains, Airway Heights, Cheney, Spokane Tribal Land, Kalispel Tribal Land, Medical Lake, and then the region uh, around Spokane County, as, as deputies and, and, uh, officers from the Spokane Police Department, they have their behavioral health unit. As they're not able to respond, we have our, we've got our own crisis response team now, but we also augment them and try to help our brothers and sisters from the county and the city, uh, to facilitate the program of people in crisis as well.
So, we wanted to kind of, um, lay out the model of the program that we created. Uh, so, Airway Heights and Cheney both have mirroring programs, um, which essentially means that I will be assigned with Airway and Noelle will be with Cheney. Uh, we're both gonna be full-time with an officer. Um, so we're both licensed mental health professionals, and, uh, we will be, each shift that we work will be assigned with a specific officer. Um, we're spending the entire shift with that officer and, um, for four days a week, so we're working four tens, Monday through Friday. Um, part of this program is we were able to get two emergency vehicle response, um, cars. We have one of those now, which is in one of the pictures for that white SUV. That's one of the new cars that we have. Um, what's unique about these cars is that they're, they are law enforcement vehicles, they're fully outfitted, but, um, we're intentionally making them less law enforcement present, so, um, we're having, you know, minimal, um, logos on the side, we have CRT, so Crisis Response Team on the side. On the back, we have West Plains Crisis Response Team, we have both the Airway and Cheney logos, and then we have the nine eighty crisis lifeline and crime check number on there. So, we spent, the clinicians are, um, just riding with the officers throughout the day. Um, and we are responding to basically any calls that have a behavioral health, mental health, or substance use disorder component to it. Uh, so this is anyone that presents to be in some sort of crisis, um, including suicidal ideation, homicidal ideation, uh, drug or alcohol misuse. We are watching the board, so as calls pop up that patrol officers would be responding to, we are jumping on those calls and either relieving patrol or joining them. Uh, we are also responding to referrals from patrol, so officers from Cheney, Airway, and the county, as far as like West Plains units, um, are sending us referrals, so if we're not on, um, they can send us a quick referral and we can later respond to that. And then the really great thing, I think, about this program is we're able to do follow-ups, so we're able to see someone that's in active crisis, de-escalate the situation, provide follow-up, and that person's no longer in crisis, maybe no longer using substances or is sober, and see what additional services we can provide at that time. Um, both of our teams have the capacity to respond to the entire West Plains, so Airway can respond, Cheney, Cheney can respond to, uh, Airway, and we can both respond to the county and Medical Lake. Um, we wanted to just kind of give a brief overview of the resources that we have already utilized and plan to utilize. Um, one of the most significant ones is just stabilization center in Spokane. Um, it's a crisis, mental health, uh, behavioral health stabilization center as well as a substance use treatment. So, one of the awesome things about this program is if we contact someone that wants to go to detox right away, we have that resource, which is a really unique resource to have. Um, most often people have to wait for a bed date to get into detox, but, but this, um, resource, we're able to just make a quick phone call and get that person there, we provide that transportation. Um, oh, and the other thing about the, the cars is that it's a half cage, and so we can provide, safely provide transportation to individuals that are in crisis. Uh, we've also designed it so that if that person's needing extra support or a clinician needs to continue an assessment, they can sit in the back next to the person. Um, we also are able to get people into, uh, the hospital, whether that's for like a medical clearance to go to a more stabilization or, um, evaluation and treatment center. Um, also involuntarily, and that's usually by AMR. Uh, we're also focused on getting basic needs met. Um, so that's, you know, connection to food, we've picked up food from food pantries, we provided bus passes to individuals. Uh, we have funding to create what we're terming as like hygiene crisis kits, which are really helpful in um, de-escalating individuals, building rapport, and we're stocking those with like basic hygiene items, food, water. Uh, we have the capacity to get cell phones for individuals, if that's gonna be a therapeutic benefit. Um, and then we can also help with gas, uh, and then transporting people to temporary shelter, um, in Spokane.
A kind of a project team structure, um, uh, Chief Bechtel, you're my, my partner in this, in this endeavor. Um, and then he has a rotating officer that they'll assign that, um, that will be paid for for half the year through this grant. Um, for half the two-year pro- process, so we'll be able to charge hours, um, to the program to be able to, um, work with our co-responders. Um, and Elise Manotti, our, our project manager, grant coordinator, um, Lieutenant Keith, and then Stanley Schuber, our finance director, and Tanya Dashiel. And then, uh, Noelle, Jenny, and then Adam Johnson, the Airway Heights Police Officer currently assigned to that role, is our, is our project team structure for the, uh, crisis response team.
Uh, we wanted to share with you guys some quick data, so you could see the impact that, uh, this program's already having on the community. Uh, keep in mind that this is, Noelle just started a couple of weeks ago, so most of this is focused in Airway. Uh, but over the last four months, we've had a hundred and seventy-nine different encounters. And basically what we count as an encounter is anytime we make contact with a person, so that's responding to a call for service or doing a follow-up. Um, out of those ninety-nine of them are unique participants, so that's ninety-nine different people that we're contacting. And, uh, we've received a hundred and twenty-four referrals. Uh, most of those are coming from patrol, but we've also received some from, um, like the fire department and outside providers. And you can see there, the zip codes that have been served. Um, we are anticipating with Noelle, starting out here in Cheney, that that number's gonna go up significantly. And we wanted to share a program success with you guys, for a individual that does reside out here in Cheney. Um, this person was referred to us from a patrol officer, and, uh, he's a middle-aged single male, lives alone, uh, does have a significant history of suicidal ideation. Um, the referral came to us that he was presenting with symptoms of psychosis, so some delusional paranoid things happening. Uh, so we got the referral, we contacted him, and we quickly noted that his symptoms of psychosis were most likely due to lack of sleep, which was caused by a lack of a certain medication. So, um, just doing our own assessment, and we completed a couple of different follow-ups, we got this person connected to a medical provider. He now has a, um, you know, a, a regular doctor that he's seeing. Uh, he's also connected to the, uh, uh, patient resource individual at this clinic. Uh, so it was a, it, I think a, a good sum up of collaboration between patrol and our team, and then that capacity to do the follow-up to make sure that people are getting the resources that they're needing, we're not leaving people hanging out to dry.
And I think as we, as we kind of talk about program successes, we really believe this is a, this is a a successful program, because it reduces patrol calls for service, so they can handle on, on, uh, you know, incoming crime calls that are for service. And then this follow-on program in the, in the continuum of care that our, that our co-responders are entering for both of our communities, will facilitate, will reduce that, uh, that, uh, that calls for service for those people in crisis, and try to get them services so that we're not having those, those repeated calls for service again and again, taking from our resources. Um, adding to the opportunities for them for service instead of us having to re- resource calls time and time again. In addition to that, I think, um, our thought process on this program is not to be happy where we are today, is to evolve this program into, into the future. As we, we went to, we attended the National Co-Responder Conference and and then we, uh, from all of the state, there's program, programs, and they have, we want to try to take those best practices and then employ them in our city, in our cities, to try to facilitate and have this service provided for our, our community. I, I think, uh, again, a next step, we're working with the Cheney Public Schools and our guest program, our youth engagement specialist officers. We'd love to try to, uh, work into a co-responder program, so we can develop something inside our schools for co-responder for kids and work in, work with our kids, and, and those kids that are in crisis in school have a co-responder, a clinician, we're working with our school, with our hope to evolve and process in this, in this, uh, to work with our, uh, Chief Public Schools. If there's any questions, we could, uh, we could, uh, address those with council, council, have us, or the clinicians or myself.
Chief, any questions for Chief? Paul, go ahead, please.
Well, uh, Chief Richmond, Chief Bechtel, City Manager Tripp. Mark and Chris, I, I really do appreciate your leadership on this, I think it's a, a program that's long overdue. I, I guess my question is, you, you noted, uh, Chief Richmond, that you needed your grant writer to come and explain. So I, so I assume there was a grant involved here, and then if so, how, how much longer do we have before we either apply for another one, or we start funding it on our own, I guess?
Uh, yeah, well, that, that's my hope, is we have sustainability in programs. I think grants are only a, a, a.
Starter.
Yeah, starter, and I think that we want to build sustainability in any program, specifically if it's vital services like this to our communities. Um, but we'll continue to manage, we have a phenomenal grant writer in Elise Manotti, who's, who, who, um, has written these grants for us. Um, we got these from the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, the first iteration was only a three or four month period until we reapplied, but this is through June of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So we have some time to, we have some time to manage and build sustainability and see what our, see what our, both of our, um, budgets look like in, in the future to try to build some possibilities for ongoing, long-term, um, partnerships, that's.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions for Chief? This is a perfect example of the West Plains collaboration and how it can be successful to provide a resource that is much needed in all of our communities, so I, kudos to Chief and Chief and Mark for collaborating over the last several months to make this happen, and welcome Jenny and Noelle. Look forward to seeing you, Noelle, in the city of Cheney. Go Eags.
Lots of you guys.
Yeah. Uh, any, any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you, you know, it's very much needed, and, you know, we're seeing it more and more on a regular basis, so. Appreciate it very much, so, thank you, everybody.
Ladies will be assigned individually to one city or another, we, it will be a revolving door, whatever the need is, if they're both on, they're both on, they'll both come. Whatever that, whatever, whatever community is, has them in need, it's not gonna be, hey, you can't leave these, they'll come, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We appreciate your time, thank you very much for being here, and appreciate you giving us, giving us some, some information on the program, so, thank you. Okay, Cindy is going to give us a little update on our financial policies. Cindy, go ahead. Just a, just an info item on this.
Just an info item. And first I'm going to see if this volume is on this computer because I think that's where the echo is coming from. There, we'll see if that makes a difference. Does that make a difference?
Yep. Yes.
Hey. What you have in front of you, it was on the agenda, are some draft financial policies. So the city has all these policies already, but we don't have them in one document called financial policies. It is a best standard from Government Financial Officers Association to have financial policies. Additionally, as we've been talking with the bond writers for our recently passed pool bond, having our financial policies all documented into one policy, addressing things that the, we have to go up for a bond rating. So we have to have a credit rating and then when they look at that, that will show how attractive our bonds are for purchase. And the financial policies are an important component of that. So we have gone through this, they, you know, you look at some entities, they have really long ones. You look at some and they're really short. Kind of tried to take the best of both worlds and just give what our general policies were, like our 25% reserve policy that we strive for in the general fund and in our governmental funds. Enterprise are a little bit different than that. One thing as you look at reserve policies, there, there's a lot of talk now about also having an operating reserve in addition to our 25% kind of our rainy day fund reserve. You know, as finance committees looked at the silver several weeks. And so there's been some comments on that, like perhaps we can strive for two months of that in the general fund. It'll be interesting to see how that comes about this year when we're budgeting in the general fund to see how that's going to work out for us. I think it's going to work out fine. But I want to look at that. It says in here that when I'm balancing the general, when I'm budgeting the general fund like I am now, I'm going to give you three options, a really conservative, a really, if we have a great year and what my best thought is. And so we'll kind of approach budgeting that way in our general fund this year. But basically this just documents the policies that we have for purchasing and our investment policy, our reserve policies, our fund balance policies. So I encourage you to please take a look at it. I would like to bring it back. Well, probably not at the next meeting, but probably the next meeting in September. After that gives us plenty of time to get some feedback. If, if there's anything that you have a question on, please let me know because I would like to get this passed and approved because this needs to be in place before we get too far down the road in not only our park bond, but in any, if the city entered any other kind of debt as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Cindy. Any questions for Cindy? We have plenty of opportunity to review this draft.
Yeah, finance for, Cindy's making us work. We're going through this thing and it's well needed. I mean, we don't want to be like, whoops. You have to be pretty old and remember that the state of Washington defaulted on bonds. It's a big mess. So all we're trying to do here is show the financial world, we got our act together that we're a low risk investment. So we get the best possible interest rate. And if we don't, then all of our taxpayers will pay more. We don't get our financial house in order. So I think this is a very good first step. Thank you Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you Cindy. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to some action items. And this is going to be the public works director show today. Todd, so resolution F-177, this is the North Sixth Street and Betts Road TIB Roundabout Consultant Agreement.
Yeah, we will try to quickly move through these agenda items. We got clearance from a TIB engineer to go ahead with the design of the roundabout. So what you have in front of you today is the consultant agreement. The agreement is for 132,000 for design of a roundabout, our first city roundabout at the intersection of North Six and Betts Road. And 90%, we, we need this agreement, a TIB agreement for 90% reimbursement of that project. Total project estimate right now is just over a million, 74,000. And hopefully we can get everything designed this year with the idea of constructing it during the summertime break of EW and school. Cause that is a very busy intersection. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Todd. Any questions for Todd on this consultant agreement?
This has been a subject that Paul works, community meeting, Vincent Dan know it well. But TIB, I mean, like the, any of the other state, especially the federally funded is very scripted on, on how we do this and just follow their, their paperwork. And we, we look at it, make sure everything's, and then they have another set of eyes from the state that looks at it too. So it's well monitored and been interesting to see how they squeeze that in. But you have to, you will. So I have comments unless we want a motion for approval of resolution F-177.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to pass resolution F-177. Any final questions or comments?
Final, you're on, you're on.
Go ahead, final comment. We're part of the, our Dura is part of the consultant team. So abstain from this. Mark? Yeah. Also Mike, I think my question is along the calls, they'll, they'll be the ones that will be telling us if we have enough space there, correct?
Yeah, when we were doing kind of the application process, basically they, they told us I needed 100 103 foot from curb line to curb line. We went out and kind of measured that and see if everything fit. We have 105 foot between curb and curb. So it's very tight. However, the sidewalks is not really the indication of the right of way. We have a little bit right away tucked back in there. So after we get the initial survey and then we'll, we'll kind of understand how that goes. The, the, the roundabouts are differently designed now. They don't have to be, you know, where you can't roll the truck tire over them. They're all designed where even if you can't make a corner, you just roll that, roll that around there. So that, that's what we're looking at right now.
Good. Yeah, I'm excited about it because that's a busy intersection and often have trouble getting out of my house. So looking forward to that. Anything else? Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You do have one abstention. Thank Todd. Resolution F-177 passes. Resolution F-178, our residential street preservation project contract award.
You know, I, I really like it when the engineers estimates the high bid on this. And, and it just shows that conservatively past our past couple of years, projects have been really, really high. So we, we actually, for this project, we're focusing on Mike McKean Way only. This year we were looking at Second Street to do something a little bit different, maybe a chip seal, but we're running out of weather, running out of time on a chip seal process. So we just decided to go with this one bit schedule. And this is the amount, this is actually to rebuild Mike McKean Way from North Sixth Street almost up to basically sunrise up in that area. So as we come across there. Low bid was Shamrock. There was two, actually three bidders, two that actually qualified. Strategists put in a bid for geotech work. They didn't really bid the project, just to put on notice that they, they, they are a geotech firm. So Shamrock submitted the low bid of 209,880. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is a different style of construction. Where are we going to go in and we're going to grind the whole road surface out? And then they're going to come in and they're going to basically take the, and regrade the subsurface and, and pound it down. And then they're doing a concrete based treatment to, to stiffen up that and then they'll do an overlay on.
Thanks Todd. Questions for Todd? I, I just heard one. Can you just clarify for me a little bit more? Is this the section that's under construction where they're doing the construction coming out of?
No, it's, it's actually, yeah. It, it is by cranks. It'd be right in front of cranks field. You can see that road is really deteriorating. So we wanted to get on it. I think one, one or two more years it would be done. We don't want to start impacting, having that, that contaminated soil up in, in our base. And then we have to remove the whole thing. So we went out, we did some exploratory borings and we felt that the base was, was very good. We did have fabric down in it, so it did protect some of that, that contamination coming up. So that was our method, but it is going to be from North Sixth Street almost to Sunrise Drive in that area.
Okay, great.
Todd, I see the, the, the bid was way below the estimate from the engineers. You think costs are going down a little bit here maybe?
I'm hoping that is, you know, like I say, I love the engineers to be the highest and I think they do too. It, it could be, yeah, it could be something that we're being looked at. We do have other competitors probably coming into the, to the region. Poe has, is coming to the West Plains as well as, as much as the West Plains is growing. We are getting a lot of asphalt companies to that end. So it could be a competitive market out here.
Thank you.
Your honor, if there's no further questions, I'd make a motion that we approve resolution F-178.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve as 178. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you Todd. Resolution 178 passes. Resolution 179, the swim cool demolition and surplus of salvage material.
Yeah, so I figured we'd at least start and Cindy provided me a list of, of stuff that we have inside the pool that, that we should be taking a look at surplusing and sale because they will not go into the, the new pool facility. Then we started talking about the demolition side of it. There is a lot of things in there that could be salvageable instead of just taking them directly to a dump site. So we gave it our best shot and is putting a resolution forward to say, hey, we want to demo this. We want to basically have the sale of salvage. I did have one correction and this is, was coming after legal review on resolution F-179. And it's at now therefore be resolved, pretty much that last sentence where it would state that the municipal and aquatics facility and surplus the salvage material, we want to change the word surplus to sale of salvage material. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. We got a pretty aggressive schedule on this. We would like to get in and start some preliminary work. I already ordered the survey of the pool itself, contacting asbestos contractors. I, I think the pool doesn't have any asbestos, but we are concerned about the roof. We'll go ahead and get that done as we move through this process of demolition. When I say salvage, I mean, there is a lot of stuff. You start talking about copper wire and everything else we have in there. It could be salvageable instead of just straight out disposal. So we're just kind of take a look at it as we go along.
Thanks Todd. Any questions for Todd? Good first step in showing progress here. Go ahead.
Todd, real quick, when, when we say salvage versus demo, so we remove the old copper pipe and anything else of value, that's salvage. And then with regard to the demo, what are, are city forces actually going to bring in our construction equipment and do that? Or are we contracting that later?
You know, I, I know that we have some options, but I, I think if, if we move forward on it and the size of that facility and, and our capabilities with our, our solid waste department and, and some of our existing equipment that we have, plus giving some of our operators a, a little bit of, of, of lead weight. They probably love to demo stuff. We've done it in the past. And they, they do very, very good work, just plugging in that timeframe and taking a look at that. Most of that stuff is going to be a concrete. I don't know the rebar structure underneath there, but most of it will be concrete. But as we start rolling, it would be pretty easy to get a, a large excavator, probably hammer in there and remove all the, the salvage stuff and then go for a, a pretty much salvage or demolition, the whole site and then hauling off.
I don't disagree. I guess my only concern is where we add on the bid law with regard to the, in, you know, city force limit.
Well, we are, we, we can pull all our projects and I don't think we have too much of a bid law on a city our size. We just have to put it on, help me out Cindy, a form 1717. And that formula, we don't, we hardly ever use. So it's a, it's a formula where we just keep track of our cost and it, it's acceptable.
I thought we had to be able to demo, wasn't there, isn't there a saving 5,000 limit on?
It's 10% of the actual municipality budget, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's similar if we're building something and did bid, we had a limit on what that would be. So I'm and then I guess secondly, we're going to be renting some equipment then I would gather. So we don't have an estimate then on?
No, I mean, this is early in the stage. We can give you an estimate. We have our own, own equipment and we can put a price to it.
So this would be charged to as a project cost, we set up a budget. Have we done any interim budget or we're not going to borrow money for interim financing or anything like that?
No, I, I, I don't think we need to do that. I think that we have, I think we can actually borrow money from our capital facilities fund. I'm going to set up another capital, a, a, a capital facilities type account. And I'll just basically borrow some money until we get our bond money for that and then I'll pay that back. And that's how I think we'll fund this initial, this initial output of funds until, and we have plenty of money in there to do that with. I think that'd be a good use of that.
Oh, I'm not opposed to using city forces to tear something apart. I mean, that, there could be, there could be unforeseen, you know, I hope there's no asbestos. I, I don't know about our boiler in insulation type stuff.
Our, our boiler i- is probably a subject to asbestos. And then probably the laminate on the roof, given the age could possibly be asbestos. But I think those are the only, only two areas. I, I don't know if the, if some of the wire coating could be, but that's all to survey.
So then our, our city forces are a combination of number of departments or is it street and parks or?
It would be a combination of, of, of just about all of our, all of our equipment operators kind of pulling it together. I'm the one that volunteers on the, on the tractor and then they come running after that.
elected officials are not allowed to volunteer for any big equipment either. But as long as we're within the confines of the bid law and as long as we have, it's a project cost that we can assign to that. I guess I could be convinced, I just, I'm not sure yet on the, if we, if we get challenged by a local contractor on, on city force work versus bidding it out and the limit they're up. So if we could check on that. We can do that. I don't have a problem proving, but I think we want to be absolutely sure we don't get sighted this year.
Anything else? Was that a, a political way to say that our employees will have fun with tractors?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, you know, it's always, it was nice to get these guys together on, on certain projects. Cause it is, they're, they're a whole host of talent out there and they do really good work. But they're all separated apart for certain months while you can pull a team together and get something done. They can really enjoy that. But yeah, like Paul says, we'll, we'll follow the bid procedures and everything else. This one is just for the demolition salvage where they're moving in a salvager directly to that end to take a look at all that. So this is just to set up to go ahead with the demolition permit and salvage if anything that we can identify in there. I think there's about four or five pieces of equipment that's been identified that we, we can physically remove from the pool. I don't know if anybody wants our, our heater, it's very old, the pool heater and all of that. All the other items are fairly old.
This will be a good way for us to save money during the project.
That, that was kind of the, the, the effort. That sounds great.
Anything else for Todd? Your honor, if there's no further questions or comments, I would move to approve F-179.
Second.
Thank you. A motion in a second to approve resolution one, F-179. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Todd. Resolution F-179 passes. Resolution F-180, our sidewalk repair project appropriation increase request.
Yeah, it, it, like I say, it's hard to get a concrete contractor to commit. Early on, they were committing earlier in the year, but they also told us after flying, never mind their book through the end of the year. So it's pretty much true. We ended up getting five star out there to complete that intersection on SR 904 and Second. We did actually have them go out and take a look at a few more areas that they were willing to come in and do. So we did have a small contract with them. So I'd like to amend that contract to get the remaining sidewalk work done if we can this year. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Todd. Questions for Todd?
If there's no questions, I would move for approval of resolution F-101, 180.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution F-180. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks Todd. Appreciate it. And that concludes the Todd Show. No more action items on the agenda. We don't have any ordinances or other business, but I'm sure we've got some staff reports, Mark.
So I wanted to just kind of give a quick overview and, and talk to you a little bit about city response to the fire. We'll just start with a, a general, generic sort of overview. And then we'll get into some specifics about the role that city staff played in the response. city staff played in the response to the fire. So gray, gray fire started on Gray Road about twelve thirty on Friday. It, and that's to the sort of southwest of, of Medical Lake. And due to the high winds, the very low humidity and high temperatures, it spread quickly. Unfortunately, I, Medical Lake, city of and surrounding areas in the direct line of fire. Initial attack, it was in Fire District three, but there were resources from all over the area that immediately started to address the fire. At about two forty-five PM on Friday, a state mobilization was authorized, which provided tremendous amount of resources from all over and dedicated to, you know, fighting this blaze. In the middle of the afternoon, the winds changed direction and the fire started moving south, which is when we started to get a little bit nervous. So we immediately started to, you know, work with the, the command there, looking at evacuation areas, looking at, you know, potential plans that we needed to have in place to protect the city of Cheney. So it was a hectic time, we'll just say that. But I can tell you that we were ready for it and we have some absolutely dedicated employees that spent a lot of time on Friday and well into the weekend addressing this, this tragedy. Throughout this entire operation, it's been just a tremendous response from so many different organizations and agencies and cities and jurisdictions in our area. I can't list them all here, but just to, you know, name a few, Fire District three, Fire District ten, Airway Heights Fire, Airway Heights Police, Spokane Fire, DNR, the Sheriff's Office, Spokane DEM, the Washington State Patrol, even STA. They scrambled very quickly to get, was it twenty buses, I think, queued up to evacuate the citizens of Medical Lake and bring them over to Cheney, to the Cheney High School, which was originally set up as the evacuation shelter. You know, the DOT, really the Red Cross, and their, their incredible quick response to get people taken care of. It was just a phenomenon to watch all these groups come together. So I want to talk a little bit about just the city and in our particular response. Just extremely proud of a lot of our people. And in this extends well beyond public safety. Of course, initially, we had fire and police. Both of our chiefs went to the command center, you know, started to get the intel about, you know, where this thing was going and the threats that may, may come to Cheney. So just from the fire perspective, you know, Chief Jenkins immediately went to the command post to assist in, in the operation and the organization. He was providing us with minute to minute updates of, you know, where the fire was going, where they thought it was going, you know, how quickly, all those sorts of things. Fire staff, we had firefighting personnel immediately dispatched out to the fire with our brush truck. We called in full-time and volunteer firefighters to make sure that the city was covered. We still had calls to run on, you know, while, while they were attending to, to the wildfire. And I would like to recognize Jeff Anderson, who was on his day off, but heard what was happening and immediately tried to get to Cheney. Took him an hour to get from Tyler just to Cheney, you know, with all the, you know, the traffic and things. But he came in and his primary role is just to kind of man the, the Cheney Fire Station and help basically find resources for us, you know, whether it's getting the contacts up at Eastern to talk about the inner tie, which, which I'll get to in a little while in our sort of public response. But Jeff was very valuable in his leadership just here in the city of Cheney and the fire operations and EMS operations here. Police Chief Bechtel, again, immediately to the command post, working on the law enforcement coordination. Obviously, as this thing was starting to spread, we had major thoroughfares that were going to be, be compromised. I ninety, SR nine oh four, you know, mean evacuation routes and things. So Chief was there and integral in deploying our, our Cheney officers to start doing traffic control and also to, to go over to Medical Lake to help with the evacuation. We had officers that were helping get their citizens on the buses and getting them over here to Cheney. The, just the staff or police officers, with the amount of traffic that was coming through Cheney, we were at numerous intersections, you know, just trying to keep traffic moving. Cheney, Spokane and nine oh four was kind of a mess for, for quite a while as people tried to look for alternative ways to get both in and out of Cheney. The Cheney Police Officers also performed some firefighting duties. In the middle of all this, all of a sudden, there's a call for a fire at the Betts Elementary Playground. So they get there and the wood chips are literally smoking. So you've got officers, Sovier and, and Christensen, who are out there with fire extinguishers, you know, putting, putting that fire out while our city firefighters were actually attending to an EMS call. So just great collaboration, pitching in wherever they could. Those two actually stayed on scene to make sure the fire didn't reignite until the Cheney School District was able to get a couple sprinklers set up out there just to water things down. Now let's talk about public works. Obviously, there was going to be a need for water if, if the, the fire spread our way. And also with, you know, usually these fire resources setting up in Cheney as their command post, they fill up their tankers and things here. So we wanted to make sure that we could, we could supply them with water should the need arise. So between Todd, who came back, he was the scheduled day off. He was at the lake, but he came screaming back because he knew his expertise would be necessary. Dan Ferguson and Clint Thompson from our water department all were, were instrumental in monitoring the water system and the reservoir levels in particular, to make sure we had adequate fire, fire flow while providing, you know, any water needed by the, by the firefighters. Todd was able to reach out Saturday morning to Sean King at Eastern, able to get the inner tie up and going to make sure that, you know, we have our reservoir levels at the appropriate levels. And again, thanks to Eastern and Sean King for immediately jumping on this and making that happen. Light Department, we had Light Department crew on standby in the event that, you know, our lines or our poles were in jeopardy. They were ready to make the, the, any necessary changes to the system to ensure that we had consistent power to all of our wells and pumps and lift stations and things, again, to make sure we had, had water for the city. Administration, we played a role in this too. I have to thank Carrie for staying with me at City Hall till well into the evening on Friday night, just trying to coordinate, pushing out emergency alerts as information was provided to, provided to us about evacuation levels and road closures and, and those things. In the meantime, all of a sudden, we thought, you know what? If fire comes our way, we have some information technology resources that, that we probably need to protect. There's a lot of data. Even though it's backed up on the cloud, you know, the most recent data. If those things were compromised, we're going to lose that data, lose financial records and things. So Cindy was on the phone with Executech, coming up with a plan. Initially, we thought, well, I'll just go down and unplug all the servers thrown back in my truck and get the heck out of town. Well, it's not that simple. So they formulated a plan to actually systematically disconnect the servers in a way that we wouldn't lose data. And, and if it got to a level two in town, they had two representatives that were going to be on their way out here to, to assist us with that. So kudos to, to Executech for, for taking this seriously and, and being ready to help us when needed. Uh, let's see. You know, out of all this, I have to say that mutual aid is critical and it works. To see all these groups come together in such an organized fashion and immediately respond to the threat, it, it's, if you don't see it, you just don't truly respect how great it is in our region. We are very lucky that we have that kind of collaboration here. What we also know is our state legislators are here to support us and our state employees. On Sunday, there was a, a meeting, kind of a media briefing that was held at the command post at the Cheney Middle School. Representative Schmick was there. We had Representative Graham was there. Senator Holy was there. Senator Schessler was there. Even Senator Billick from Spokane was there to show his support. Mayor Woodward from City Spokane was there. We also had Hillary Franz, the Commissioner Lance. She even came and spoke about, you know, supporting the effort, making sure we had the resources we needed to adequately attack this thing. And then finally, just in terms of recognition, I, I want to especially recognize Chief Roba from Fire District three. That guy's expertise and his experience in, in wildland firefighting was instrumental in the initial attack before all the resources, resources got here. And so we are lucky to have somebody like him just right in our backyard. So I say this just to show you the dedication in all of our public servants, both here at the city of Cheney and the region. These folks are all heroes and right now they're all exhausted. But they're continuing to do their duties and serve the community and keep us all safe. So I'll be happy to any questions and if Chief Bechtel has anything he'd like to add, certainly invite him up and then he could probably answer some more of the technical questions.
Thanks, Mark. Don't forget, you are the point man in a lot of this too. So thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
I know it was. Carrie, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mark? Yeah, it's, it's been a rough weekend, believe me, going to those incentive command briefs. Just to echo what Mark said, the collaboration is amazing in this region. It really is. And everybody knows it. And they're like, wow, we're lucky to be in this region because how collaborative everybody is. Everybody comes together on the same page. There's folks coming in from California, all over the place to, to help. So that's been. I, I just took a tour to speak of our legislators. Senator Cantwell was here just before this meeting. I went on a tour of Medical Lake and it's it's devastating. It really is. There's really not much from Hallet Road, right outside the city limits, all the way to Silver Lake. It's, this is going to take weeks and weeks to clean up. So I'll put together an email with some pictures that I took, but it's, heart goes out to everybody affected. Let's keep Terry Cooper in our thoughts because she's doing a fantastic job. We need the effort for sure. Anyway.
Yeah, and we're here to support them in any way we can. We certainly reached out to Terry and, and to their city administrator Sonny, offering any, any services that we can, we can provide. So.
Yeah, and they're a great team together for sure.
Yep.
A couple, a couple of things I wanted to bring up on that is if you're not signed up for the Cheney Alert System, please do. It's very easy. You can get updates on your phone. Be careful of information on social media. There's a lot of unofficial information getting sent out around there. You know, Cheney's going to level two and it confuses people, it frustrates people and it scares people. So be careful with that. The Spokane County Emergency Management is the, they're the head agency in the county. And they've got a Facebook page and they've been keeping that fairly up to date. Of course, they've also got the Oregon Road Fire and a couple others, but that's where the real information is. There, unfortunately, there's just been some miscommunication out there on social media. So and tomorrow, I know this, this is going to be a Medical Lake Community Meeting, but I just wanted to share it. Tomorrow at seven PM at the middle school, Terry's going to host, Mayor Cooper's going to host a community meeting. Bring the community together so they can, she can answer questions and she'll have District three there and DNR and everything to provide, provide information because this, you know, although the fire is not out, but it's being controlled a little bit, there's people that are going to need assistance for months and months and months, and the numbers are staggering. So what you hear on media, you know, on the news, some of the information that we get from these incentive command meetings are staggering. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just real quickly, at four PM today, they, they tampered a lot of the evacuation orders. And so there's no more level threes. The yellow is level two, green is, so that's, that's probably the best.
That's good news. And after touring Medical Lake, people either going to be elated or devastated. It's not good. Anyway, but the city of Cheney is here to support and provide assistance whenever we can, like we have been and we will continue to. Council reports, Mr. Schmidt.
Well, I might have some stuff to everyone involved. You can't thank everyone enough that responds to these things. It's unfortunate, these disasters, though they do bring the best out in people and organizations, and I think we're seeing that here. It's just really unfortunate. My heart goes out to Mayor Cooper and all the good people in Medical Lake. They just have to know that we have their backs and they'll just, you know, look forward to rebuilding. It's, it's very difficult. But fortunately, I think we're going to see this more and more in these summers than when you have humidity in the single digit and forty, fifty mile an hour winds, something's going to happen. So at some point, we're planning for, even in urban areas, on getting a safe zone around your home as we garden brush arbivitae and all of that sort of thing. It's, they do make a difference, but again, hats off to our emergency personnel. Job well done. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd echo the same thing, which is definitely unprecedented and just a really sad weekend. But thanks to all the staff and first responders, we wouldn't be where we were with, where we are now without, without you guys.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, this is an incredible collaboration with so many different partners throughout the state and probably out of state also. And definitely want to say thank you, you know, and I, I saw some of the rumors flying and I, you know, I finally had to say to a couple people, it's like, please stop. You know, unless it's fact, don't spread rumors because it creates chaos. And the other thing, you know, I, I signed on for the, the first alert, but I don't seem to get any of the alerts that come through, and I don't know why. I'm not on Facebook. There's a lot of people who aren't on Facebook. So the updates that you all have sent out has helped because it provides a link to get to the actual information that's factual. And I appreciate that and I want to say thank you for that. But yeah, I mean, I so far, I know of two families that have lost their homes, friends of mine. So and it's just beginning. People are just getting in. So absolutely heartbreaking and it's hard when you don't, when you have to sit back and there's nothing you can do. You know, I'm, I'm a person, I want to be out there helping and doing something and to just sit and, and watch and listen is, is so difficult for me. But anyway, community meeting, that's for all community, that's for.
She's opening it up to the community, Medical Lake community, but I think anybody could probably show up.
It's here at our middle school?
No, no, Medical Lakes Middle.
Okay, got it.
It's, I, I just bring it up. People are going to go back after that level two, level one, they're going to go back home and it might not be there. So they wanted to get a team together, American Red Cross and all the support folks, resources there in the same room. So community can come in and ask questions and, and know where to go because a lot of people don't know what to do at this point.
I misunderstood. I thought you meant.
No, Medical, Medical Lake Middle.
That's all I have.
Right.
Oh, it's kind of a lot of the same. I mean, just a lot of appreciation for the people that are helping, you know, with what's already happened and what's still currently happening, but also those people that are opening up their houses and their pastures and whatever else, you know, people with the animals. I know there's going to be more of that as people are now starting to get back into the city and seeing, you know, what they do have and what they can work with. But, you know, not just the, the first responders, but also the other just community members that are donating their time and, and money and, and efforts too. So really appreciate those people as well.
Yeah. Yeah, just thank you. Thank you. Everybody that, that helped out and, and administration and everybody. So it was very frustrating, just not being able to do anything, just sitting there. But yeah, thank you. I hope Chief Jenkins gets some sleep here. I hope so. I'm sure they're all pretty tuckered out.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you to the first responders and the fire departments. They did such a great job. It was just wonderful to see how they collaborated together and how they worked together and how they just fought this really well. And that was really great. I went to a And, um, that was really great. I went to a meeting today in Medical Lake as well. It was the first, um, volunteer coordination meeting. And so lots of nonprofit organizations, churches, Red Cross, everybody in the room. Getting ready to coordinate people coming back into their homes. It was a great meeting to see people starting to make those. Um, those connections and beginning to respond. We've already had hundreds of thousands of dollars raised. Um, that will go for the efforts. This will take several years after being a part of the Long Term Recovery Organization from Alden. I can tell you this will not be a couple of month process. This will be a multi-year process. Um, having been there and seen it, it's, it's going to take some time. And so I just want to say thank you to those first responders and. They did such a great job. I would also like to say, we, we had so many community members responding to different needs. Right on the spot that that was great too, helping people move out, helping people get safe. Uh, the one death that we've had is from an individual that continued to go back. And help people get out and unfortunately didn't get out his last time. So, um, just a great job there. Also, I, I'd like to say thank you to some of the farmers and ranchers. Um, what, what will come out and, uh, several of our great Cheney farmers and ranchers actually took their tractors. And they disced the area behind Lakeland Village and the hospital, saved the village, saved the hospital. And then while the fire was raging. Drove their tractors through Medical Lake through the fire and saved the backside of, um, the state land and all of those houses as well. Along the way and disking a lot of other places as well. Not to mention, they also gave, um, hundreds of thousands of gallons from their water lines to DNR to fight the fire. So they were also extremely instrumental in helping the fire get fought on that end. So thanks so much for their. Um, their efforts as well. It's, it was just awesome to see such a, a community effort to say, hey, we got to get this out. We got to get out quick. So. That's been great and, um, it'll be good. And, um, I'm hoping that there would be a way that even the, the city could be a part. We partner with Medical Lake in a lot of ways. I think it'd be great if we could even come up with a possible financial donation or a way that we could, um, specifically support some things. In Medical Lake that would be a great partnership there with them as well. I think there'd be something for us to look at and then possibly make a motion for in the future. Thanks, Mark. A couple of final things. So the incident, uh, res- incident command center was at the, our middle school. They'll be there through much of tomorrow, but they're going to move to Pine Lodge, the Eastern State Hospital or. Yeah, Eastern State Hospital, Pine Lodge. That command center is moving there because the district needs to get that school going for, for the kids to go back. So. Uh, you'll see a lot of, a lot of activity moving out of Cheney. I have something else that crossed my mind, but now I can't think of it. Um, oh. One thing that, one thing that I realized is I'm probably not as prepared as I thought I was, um, during these levels, you know, I really thought about that. When, you know, I was thinking, okay, if we go to level two or three, am I prepared personally? To get the hell out, you know? And my thought was I probably would have left earlier. You know, and not me, but a person. If you think about this city of Cheney and you don't have many ingress egress routes, if everybody's leaving at the same time, it's almost best to leave early. So. It's not if this happens again, it's when, because we are in a hotspot in the world for wildfires. Anyway, think about that, you know, just have a, have a. Go bag ready or whatever. So anyway, any final thoughts, Mark or anybody? Okay. Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.